Live from the North Branch Peoria Public Library, this is the Peoria City Council at-large candidate forum brought to you by the League of Women Voters Greater Peoria Area and Peoria Public Radio. I'm Tanya Coontz. There are six candidates for five at-large Peoria City Council seats in the April municipal election. Beth Akerson, Catherine Coyle, Beth Jensen, Ryan Spain, Eric Turner, and Chuck Weaver are all participating in today's forum. The candidates have two minutes for opening statements, a minute to answer each question, and two minutes for closing statements. Members of the League are serving as timekeepers. The order of who starts and who closes was determined prior to this broadcast. Our first question goes to Mr. Spain. Oh, opening statements. See, I'm jumping the gun already. So, opening statements, start still with Mr. Spain.
Thank you, Tanya, and thank you all for being here in the audience today and those of you that are tuning in live on the radio. I'm very grateful to the League of Women Voters for hosting us here today, for WCBU for carrying this broadcast. This is a very important election, and I'm very excited to be running for reelection. So, my name is Ryan Spain. It's been an honor to serve the citizens and people of Peoria for the last eight years on the city council, and I'm excited to be running again for reelection. I'm running again to continue serving as a champion for the city of Peoria, someone that's willing to stand up, make difficult decisions, and position our community for a better future. I think these are really exciting times for Peoria, and certainly over the last several years, we've been through some very difficult times. And so, the opportunities that are in front of our community right now really have never been better. And so, while we still have major challenges to work through, this is a great time to be in Peoria. If I'm reelected, my priorities really focus in the following four areas. First, we need to attract and retain jobs in our community. Jobs are really the currency for a successful community, and we need to have more of them in the city of Peoria. Second, we need to grow our population, especially in older areas of our city. And I think we've been working very hard, I know I have, to do that, and we're positioned to experience some significant population growth in the city of Peoria. Third, we need to balance our budget, and that's something that I've excelled at doing for my last eight years, making very difficult cuts to the operating budget of the city of Peoria during some of the worst years of our economy, and I'll continue to do that. And then, fourth, we need to improve our schools. And certainly, I'm not running for school board; we have a lot of good folks that are. But I think that the city council plays a critical role in really positioning our schools for an excellent future in Peoria, and that's one of the most important topics facing our community right now. Thank you for your support, and thank you for being here today.
Mr. Turner.
Good morning, Peoria. Today, you're going to have the opportunity to get to know us, each and every one of us, a lot better, and where we stand on Peoria's future. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity over the past number of years for serving you. I've tried to be a voice of reason and be a positive force for this community. The interesting thing is, is that I hope that the majority of the votes that I cast on your behalf were the right votes for you. The one thing I think about is that, like families, no one agrees 100% of the time. I don't have to tell anyone sitting in this room that government has changed. There was a time that you could request something, and we could go ahead and add it to the budget; we could add programs; we could add services; we could add headcount. But we're in a different time right now. You look at the federal deficit, $20 trillion. You look at our state, everything, we're number 50 in everything that we do. And the local government, we've tried to tell you over the last few weeks that we're going to have shortfalls for about the next three to five years. So, we're going to have to learn. We could tell you anything, sitting in this room, but we are going to have to learn to live within our means. We've got basically $189 million budget, and we're going to come in about $5 million short. So, no matter what we tell you, it's got to be within our means that we can afford it, or otherwise, the only other opportunity that we have is to put it in your backs. I've got ideas, and I have the experience to be able to hopefully continue doing the things that you would like me to do on your behalf. Thank you very much. I ask you for your support.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Chuck Weaver, and I want to start by also just thanking the League and thanking the library for letting us be here; what a great facility, as well as the voters who have supported me in the past and are here today, and also either on the radio or on the news that are going to listen to the future, because it's been a great honor working for you, and I look forward to doing it again over the next four years. We have up here six good candidates. There's not a poor candidate among us. So, what's the purpose of this election? You can't go wrong. Other than, this election can be used to send a message about what's most critical to you. We have a very interesting voting structure. You get five votes, and I want you to watch today and think about who deserves either all five of your votes, or maybe you split them between two people. But here's what you have to think about: How do we understand the most critical issues facing our community? I read a great book a few years ago called "The Art of War." Should be "The Art of Business," but it talks about this: When you're going into war, are you an egg or a boulder? Are you throwing an egg at a boulder? If you have 150 soldiers and you're throwing an egg at 1,500, by golly, you're the egg, not the boulder. If it's only 15 soldiers, you're the boulder. Here are the four boulders facing our city that we have to prioritize, and listen to how we deal with these. Streets and safety, those are our key priorities. Everything else is something that we like to do; those are our two most important things. I voted against $42 million of things over the past four years that were not streets or safety. Education, I'm anxious to tell you about how I've worked with District 150 and District 323. And then, finally, job growth, and I think I've demonstrated my ability to work in unique ways to grow our community with regard to jobs. I'd just like to conclude by saying that we're going to measure change based on a chart I always talk about: Middle-income people staying in the city or leaving the city. We are now at 76% low income in our city. That has to change. I'm focused on how we can change that. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Akerson.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to Tanya Coontz of WCBU. My name is Beth Akerson, and I am grateful to have been elected four years ago. As an incumbent, you know me to be fiscally conservative, research-based, and a champion for your interests. My actions and voting record are aligned with making Peoria beautiful, safe, and a prosperous place to live. Today, all candidates will attempt to differentiate themselves. Which candidates are most aligned with your values and your vision for the future? Make no mistake, every issue that comes before the city council has an impact on you. Think of these decisions as building blocks. Over time, they create what you see; over time, they create either a beautiful city or an ugly one, a safe neighborhood or a scary place, vibrant or ordinary. Your life is changed by every vote made on the city council floor. When you leave home, do you love what you see? Do you love how you feel? If the answer is yes, then ask yourself, do all Peorians feel that way? Does every citizen see beauty, feel safe, and prosperous? If the answer is no, we have much more work to do, and that is why you need to retain me on the city council. Let me prove it. Do you remember when it became clear that Walmart was attempting to build a new supercenter store at the Peoria Stadium? That deal was being discussed behind closed doors for months. The people involved in those private meetings will now say they do not remember having those behind-the-scenes conversations, but they were happening. And who stuck their neck out for you? It was me. I gathered neighborhood support, and I said, "Get yourselves organized, because if you don't, you will see semi-trucks, asphalt, and Walmart lights." You need voices for your interests, your values, your vision. Thank you.
Ms. Coyle.
Thank you. Good morning, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and to all of you for making time on your Saturday morning to be here. Thank you. My name is Catherine Coyle. I am the only challenger in this race, kind of like the little engine "Who Could." I don't have a lot of money, and I don't have a lot of name recognition, but I will tell you one thing: I'm an incredibly hard worker and quick study, and I'm going to be knocking on a lot of doors and coming out and reaching out to a lot of you to talk about the issues most important to you and what my vision is for the city. I decided to file to run for the Peoria City Council in December after a long evaluation during which I looked at my two teenage daughters, and I thought, you know, they're going to be going off to college in just a couple of years, and when they do, they'll have a lot of choices after college as to whether or not they stay in Peoria or possibly come back to Peoria. There's three things that need to happen for my children and your children to want to come back to Peoria. We need strong, safe, vibrant neighborhoods which retain their value. We need quality public infrastructure, and that has to begin with fixing our crumbling roads. And finally, we need a growing economy where jobs are plentiful, and my children and yours have a place to come back and find a job so they can settle in Peoria. In addition to those three priorities and why I'm running, a little bit about my experience, because with everything, experience counts. We have a very experienced group up here, and I'm honored to be in the presence of these candidates. However, a little bit about my experience: I have served for six years as an elected trustee for Illinois Central College during which we faced many challenges not unlike the challenges the city of Peoria is facing. We've had declining state revenue that entire six years. We've had declining enrollments the last four years, and we've had stagnant-to-flat property taxes during that time, all challenges to ICC's budget. But I'm very proud that we've managed to balance the budget during those six years. Additionally, my background and move to the city of Peoria, never mind, I'm done.
Two minutes goes quick. Ms. Jensen.
Thank you, and good morning. I'd like to thank WCBU and the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity to be here today to talk to the voters of the city of Peoria. I'm excited about this campaign. It's the first time I've ever run for office, but as the newest city councilperson, I have been an independent voice for all. I am a leader who is listening and demanding change by insisting that all voices are heard before decisions are made. I have worked hard to make city government better, and I will continue to do so if elected. I am an honest, straight shooter who tells it like it is. When we were told how bad our projected budget deficits were back in January, I was the only one sitting around the horseshoe who was straight with the public from the beginning by saying everything had to be on the table. The Journal Star said that took guts, and even though it may be difficult, I will always be honest and straight with the public. I am also a longtime neighborhood advocate who lives in an older home and an older neighborhood in the heart of the city. I am the only candidate who lives in an older home and an older neighborhood in the heart of the city. That geographic diversity is important for the city council. I understand the needs and importance of maintaining and strengthening the older neighborhoods, and how that is vital to the health of our entire city. I also understand the importance of development and growth throughout the entire city, and how that is important for us to strengthen our older neighborhoods. I am also an experienced municipal attorney who represents school districts and municipalities. I was a city attorney for seven years. I understand how the city works, and I've been in the trenches working to make the city better since I moved here 20 years ago. As Councilwoman Denise Moore says, "I am the real deal."
Thank you to the candidates for your opening statements. We're going to jump in with questions. You have 60 seconds to answer each question. We're going to start with a fairly tough question. We've turned down the heat in the room in order to compensate. We're going to do a brief station update. This is the Peoria City Council at-large candidate forum brought to you by the League of Women Voters and Peoria Public Radio. We're coming to you live from the North Branch Peoria Public Library. I'm Tanya Coontz. All right, here we go. Mr. Turner, you will be first in answering this question: How does the city of Peoria deal with what we can probably safely refer to as the pension fiasco that's been looming since the early '90s?
That's the interesting issue. Thank you very much. The people that get those pensions have earned those pensions, and we can't do anything about with regard to taking them away from them. I think we can sit down and try to work with the state legislature. We need to talk to them, because they decide when those pensions increases are necessary or needed. But we're the people that have to pay for it in this community. Maybe there's some way that we can work it out to where other people coming in in the future can have a different type of pension, maybe a 401K or something of that nature. But those things have to be negotiated, and we can't make the decision all along. It has to be between us, the legislature, and the people that receive those pensions. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver.
Councilman Turner is exactly right where the problem comes from. A lot of this is out of our hands, but we have to be aware that we have to still deal with it. It's a circumstance that we can't necessarily solve; we just have to be prepared to handle it properly. I got on the council in 2011 in my first budget, and after doing it, I thought, you know what? I've got a lot to learn yet. I've got to get up to speed quickly. So, I asked the city manager for a 10-year budget projection, because I understood the problem with these pensions. That budget projection showed that we had a $37 million deficit over that next 10 years. I immediately began reacting differently. At the beginning, I voted against $42 million worth of items. A lot of you folks think we've got to have them. The reality is, they're not the job of cities. We're about safety and streets. Three months ago, I asked for an update of that. We now have a $48 million deficit for the next four years. The problem has gotten worse. We must be very conscientious. I hope to get to talk about that some more in the next question.
Mrs. Akerson.
Thank you. Obviously, the pension topic is on everyone's mind, and it has been. It's been, you know, the focus of the governor's race, and I know that people who work hard to protect us, to provide us with safety care very much about how we discuss this. When you focus in on people's livelihood, it creates emotional reaction. There isn't a person in this room that would sit back and not react and fight for what they believe that they deserve. We have been faced and forced to deal with this pension crisis as if it's an independent decision that we, as city councilpeople, will make. It's not. This is going to be a negotiated solution. We need everyone at the table. We have to be respectful for the work that's done, and we have to be mindful of the taxpayers' obligation.
Ms. Coyle. Thank you. You know, pensions are liabilities that the city owes. The hard-working men and women who work for our city have gone out there, put themselves out there, sometimes in harm's way for our public safety employees, and they've earned these pensions, and they paid into the system. There was a great article in the newspaper recently just about the amount that our police and fire, over 9%, that they pay in to a pension system, expecting to be able to enjoy their retirement. These are obligations that we signed up for. We owe these individuals, and I think there are a lot of other expenses that we can be looking at. We've almost heard this demonization of pensions, as though these people are living high on the hog. They're not. They earned what they have, and we should be representing them well and keeping that in mind. And I think there's other expenditure line items we need to be looking at first to cut.
Ms. Jensen.
Thank you. I mean, this is a very difficult question, obviously, and the city does not have complete control over it since it is state-mandated. But first and foremost, we need to work together. We need to work with the, you know, the leaders of the unions. I see several of them here. I see Tony Artis, president of the firefighters here, and others. We need to work together to try to solve this problem. And as Ms. Coyle stated, the individuals that have those pensions so far have earned them, and we have to respect that. But we need to work together moving forward. We need to work with our legislators and come up with some solutions to solve this problem. You know, right now, the city is paying 57% of our property taxes are going to pay the city's pensions, so we need to do something. But I agree, that's why I've pushed for public input in the budget process, so we can have input from all of the citizens, including those workers whose pensions will be affected. Thank you.
Mr. Spain.
Pensions are a major challenge for our community and cities throughout the entire state of Illinois. I disagree that this is something that is out of our hands, though. I have been a council member that has been at the bargaining table in Springfield, working to develop solutions for this issue. Now, as you know, pensions are protected in the Illinois Constitution. Those benefits cannot be diminished unless there is a constitutional amendment or some type of surprise ruling by the state Supreme Court. I don't expect to see that change. So, what else can we do? And I think there are some things that we can do that don't diminish pension benefits for folks that deserve these dollars, our public safety employees, but can create better opportunities within the pension system. We spend about $1 million a year in administrative services in the city of Peoria for our police and fire pensions. Multiply that by the hundreds of municipalities throughout the entire state, you've got a lot of administrative costs. We need to work with police and fire to see if we can develop a statewide fire fund, a statewide police fund that can have better investment returns and better administrative costs.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. All right, we'll go to question two, for which we will start with Mr. Weaver. What is your current opinion regarding the blending of public and private dollars?
Blending or the, how we get involved in public and private projects? I think they're requesting us about public and private projects. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, that is exactly the question, sir.
Excellent question. It's one that we've dealt with quite a bit lately. Nobody spends money quite like a person who owns that money. Governments tend to be foolish in the way they spend, and we've had some of that happen in the past. I supported the Peterson project, for example, as a public-private partnership on the first time it came before us, because in that case, the citizens were in the first position for loan payback. It was brilliant. Their attorney brought us an idea, and when I heard about it, I thought, this is something we could do a number of times. Basically, our loan went in, and their property taxes went up to pay back that loan. In the event they ever defaulted, that loan gets paid back before the banks get paid. We are 100% secure in that position. In the first place, it's not our job to do that. I voted against a number of those, but if I'm going to be sitting here and other council members are going to support it, I'm going to at least be certain we do it in a way that protects the taxpayer dollars, and in that case, that worked.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is my mic on?
You're good.
Okay. The blending of public and private money, I think that's a very important question, and the reason it is, is that the public's interests need to be considered when their money is being spent. So, if a project comes forward, and it has broad-based appeal, long-term benefit, extraordinary economic value, then I think that the city should be involved. I have not voted in favor of the majority of the projects that have come forward because they haven't met those standards. I haven't seen those as serving you for your long-term best interests, and I will continue to scrutinize all projects and make sure that if we are spending your money, you are going to get something that we can be proud of for generations.
Thank you, Mrs. Akerson. Now, Ms. Coyle.
Thank you. Blending public and private dollars. You know, one of the third bullet points I pointed out to you and why I'm running is because I want to see us grow our economy so there will be jobs in the future for my teenage daughters to return to. And I do think it's necessary sometimes for the city to step in and take the necessary, go through the necessary motions to get businesses to invest in Peoria. That said, any time that the city of Peoria is going to try to attract a business here, they need to consider the risk to the taxpayers. And any investment to get a business to locate here has to be at low risk to the taxpayers and with a high possible rate of return for the city of Peoria. We cannot be an open-door bank. We must really carefully think about what we are doing to attract businesses to Peoria.
Thank you, Ms. Coyle. Now, Ms. Jensen.
Thank you. This is an important question, and this is why I have been advocating that the mayor appoint a task force that I've offered to chair and hopefully another councilperson that will include members of the public, developers, the chamber, and staff that will develop guidelines for anyone who comes to the city requesting public investment or public dollars before they move forward with a private development project. I think that we need to have these guidelines so everyone knows what the city is looking for and what the criteria are before the city will invest in a public project. There's a model in Austin, Texas that's similar to this, and that's what I think the city should do, and I think the public should be involved in developing those guidelines. I think that will help us be consistent when somebody comes to the city requesting for public money to be used in a project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mr. Spain.
Thank you. Great question. I think the best way to blend public and private dollars is the model that I've developed in the Warehouse District. So, I went to Washington looking for federal dollars to invest in infrastructure in the Warehouse District. We got it done. Went to Springfield doing the same thing. And so, now, we've been able to invest in public infrastructure in the Warehouse District to improve the streets, widen the sidewalks, create amenities now that will allow the private sector to come forward and develop. And so, if you're talking about the best type of blend, I really think that's the ideal situation, because our job is to focus on infrastructure and investments that benefit the public. How do you then leverage those investments so that the private sector can come forward and spend dollars? And so, I would call that the Warehouse District model, and fortunately, we have a lot of exciting activities coming up in the Warehouse District, and I think that's, generally speaking, the type of model that would be best suited for communities.
Thank you, Mr. Spain. Mr. Turner.
When I opened up a little earlier, I tried to highlight the situation that not only our city is in, but other cities are in. And the way to get out of that, two ways. One, you can tax your way out of it, and then the people in your community leave your community, or you can grow your way out of it. One way to grow your way out of it is through public-private partnerships. But making good decisions with the public-private partnerships that you invest in and hoping that you'll get some adequate financial returns is going to make a difference, because there's only two ways out: Tax or grow it out. And that's what I want to do. Be positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We now start. Mrs. Akerson, this is question number three. Peoria's combined sewer overflow issues will need an expensive fix. What funding methods have been discussed? What do you favor, or which particular plan do you favor? Or do you have one? Like, do you favor any particular solution is the best way to put that question? Do you favor any particular solution?
The combined sewer overflow issue has been percolating and discussed for now probably 20 years, and we now have what I would consider to be an excellent solution that was worked out with our new Public Works Director. He has recommended a green solution, and a green solution will give you all something to see rather than a gray solution, which would be underground, and a gray solution would be built by a German company. So, the solution that we have, I think, is a good one, and I think it will create local jobs. And now, how will we pay for it? What we are starting to do is explore a combined sewer utility, stormwater utility, and we have not heard back from the consultants to see what that would look like or how much that would cost by taxpayer or property owner or surface area, and we will all make a decision when we get that information.
Thank you, Mrs. Akerson. Ms. Coyle.
Thank you. You know, we've been hearing about the combined sewer overflow issue for, as Beth said, almost 20 years, and we've taken a long time to deal with it. There have been several years when the city was not faced with quite nearly the financial deficit that it is this coming year, and I really would have liked to have seen the city addressing this much sooner. That said, I think the first steps that have been taken are very good ones: Looking at green solutions instead of gray solutions. Again, those gray solutions are the concrete pipes under the ground, which no one sees, and no one understands what's going on with that. The green solutions are very visible, and I think that's important for taxpayers to be able to see that investment occurring. Furthermore, the price is substantially different between the green and the gray. The estimates for the gray solutions were $300 to $400 million. The green are much less than that, and I'd like to see us experiment with those green solutions on a smaller, limited basis and test the results of those and see what the results are.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Coyle. Ms. Jensen.
Thank you. Well, first, I'm very excited about this opportunity. The plan that we have developed, which is a The plan that we have developed, which is 100% green solution, is going to be incredible for the city of Peoria. Not only is it going to provide us with economic and environmental, it will provide us with economic and environmental sustainability for years to come. If the EPA accepts our proposal, it will provide jobs and sustainability to us for years. It's going to be an investment into the city that's 30 or 40 times anything we have ever seen, providing local firms and local labor, and giving us a huge economic benefit. It will revitalize our local economy and improve our water quality. So, I'm very excited about that. Now, I'm not sure how we will pay for it. I think that we need to look into doing a sewer utility program, and I also think, and I'm excited about, public input on helping us develop that plan and how you pay for it.
Thank you. Thank you. I know that 60 seconds, it goes fast, doesn't it? It really does. Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mr. Spain.
Thank you, Tanya. I have a, kind of a different take on this. I'm not excited about this. I'm angry. I really am. This is an unfunded mandate to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars, and, and it really gets my blood boiling. So, I think the role of the council, and I'm certainly supportive of, of green solutions to provide remedy to what this mandate is dictating upon us, but we have to do it in the most low-cost possible way. And so, when you're talking about 100, 200, 300 million dollars, think of the impact that that makes on taxpayers. So, we're at the negotiating table, working very hard against EPA. They're tough to negotiate with, but we have to make sure that their definitions of the type of storms we're trying to resolve through CSO is not some kind of superstorm of the century definition that is not appropriate, and we need to maximize the furthest length of time possible to pay for this, because we can't afford it.
Thank you, Mr. Spain. Mr. Turner.
I think without question, the green infrastructure strategy is probably the best one for us to proceed with. However, when you start talking about a combined stormwater utility, I get worried. I get worried because of the potential impact on each and every one of you. We still have to assess what are going to be the benefits of this storm, of this utility, versus what are going to be the negatives, and that means impact on you. Other communities that are faced with this particular situation are still trying to figure out how they're going to pay for it. So, there's no question. We've got a long way to go before this can be finalized, and I'm one that don't want to put any cost on you unless I don't have a choice, and that would have to come from a decision from the federal government, but I have no desire to do anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm fortunate enough to have been a business guy and run a number of businesses in my life, and the thing that I've learned is, when you're able to run a tire organization, there's always six or seven elements to every type of decision you make. A lot of times, we get stuck on one or two. Our council was focused on this green or gray solution. One night, sitting in closed session, everyone said, "Yep, let's go ahead." And I said, "We're nuts. We've never seen any charts on what happens to taxpayers." I've got two charts here. You can come look at these afterwards. Under that plan that night, in five years, the typical taxpayer would have paid $120 per month to solve this problem. $120 per month. We went back and started working. I recommend stretching out the time period from eight to 20, and then using 30-year bonds. The second chart I have has $38, still terrible, in 2034. We give this time to prepare. I understand numbers. A little bit ago, I said, I mentioned the Peterson deal. People are shaking their head, "No." I voted "no" on the second one, because it didn't have a good structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. You're listening to 89.9 FM WCBU HD1, Peoria Public Radio. I'm Tanya Kuntz. This is question number four. For that, we start first with Ms. Coyle. Why not buy out the water company?
You know, I moved to Peoria in 1993 from Tennessee, and having grown up in Tennessee and living mainly in Memphis and Nashville, both cities owned and ran their own water. I moved here, and the first thing I did as a budget analyst for the city of Peoria was start flipping through the pages, and I remember asking City Manager Peter Korn, "Where, where are our utilities? Where's the water?" And quickly learned that, under an 1870 provision in our constitution, which capped a city's indebtedness at 5% of the assessed valuation, cities all over the state just started forming special districts and other ways to finance their debt. And I'm sure it was only meant to be a temporary deal with Illinois American Water Company, but nonetheless, here we are discussing it now every few years. Boy, that 60 seconds goes quickly. Anyway, I'm open to learning more about it, but I've never seen a cost of what it would be. I've never seen any studies of what the value and the structure is of the, the infrastructure and the equipment of Illinois.
Thank you.
We need a minute and a half.
She's protesting the timing already.
Can we vote on that?
Ms. Jensen.
Thank you. Well, I'm not sure it's a "why not." I think if the, the council needs to have a thorough analysis done by engineers and accountants well ahead of the time when it is for the city to decide whether or not to exercise its option to buy the water company. That was not done this past round of us deciding what to do. I had just joined the council in September 2013, and we had to make a decision in November. We did not have the analysis and the study that we needed to decide whether it was good for Peoria or whether it was not. That needs to be done well ahead of time, a year before that decision has to be made, so that we have all the information, all the facts, and we can make the right decision. Because it may be good for Peoria, and it may not, but we don't have that information at this time to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mr. Spain.
Thank you. I voted two times against purchase of the water company. It's a big vote. It's a significant cost for taxpayers in the community. And again and again, we look at this issue, and I think it's important that we do, because it is an opportunity for us, and we need to understand it. There are always two big issues associated with purchase of the water company. First, what is the purchase price? And unfortunately, we can't get to a known purchase price until you go pretty far down the road in consideration. And then, secondly, what is the condition of the underground infrastructure, which is even harder to figure out? And as we know, we have an aging water infrastructure that could carry some very significant liabilities from a capital expenditure standpoint. But we need to keep looking at this. There's a business group looking at this now. One of the council members is involved in that. I'm supportive of those efforts. I think we need to get a lot of people involved in that, though, so that we have a fair look at this analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Spain. Mr. Turner.
Thank you very much. I have consistently voted against purchasing the water company, because at the time that it came before the council, it was a trust issue with me. I was concerned as to how the council would spend the money. Next thing you know, we're in the mode of hiring an excessive amount of people, a lot of new programs, et cetera. Five years down the road, we find ourselves back into a debt situation that we don't need to put you in. However, I'm finding out that water is an extremely valuable commodity. All you got to do is look at California and what they're undergoing, and the, in the future that they face, in addition to Arizona, et cetera. And now, I look at CSOs, I look at continual budget deficits, I'm looking at this whole thing a little differently now than I looked at it in the past, because this will be a revenue stream. I don't know how we're going to do it, but we really need to take a serious look at it in the future, and we need to include the citizens out there that would have to pay for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. I want to clear up one thing. If we buy the water company, we have to pay for the infrastructure improvements. If we don't buy the water company, we still have to pay for the infrastructure improvements. People think that that something's going to happen, that if we buy it, we are responsible, period, okay? I've been a proponent of looking at the numbers, and one of my most frustrating moments on the council was when I started last August, asking for information and did not get anything. I did not get anything up until the vote. It was buried, and I was stonewalled, and I'm still very angry about that. There are three things we need to understand. First, politicians don't do well with money. If we buy it, it's got to be in a water district where we can't touch it. Second, we have to understand how we're going to take care of those employees that currently have those jobs, and make sure we can protect their pensions, because it's very critical to them. And third, we need to understand if we even have the budgeting capabilities. I'm not a yes on the purchase. I am an aggressive yes on studying it, and I hope we get a chance to do it this time. I think we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mrs. Agasson.
Thank you. I think collectively, you can hear that, number one, we need time to study this, we need time to educate the public, we need to know exactly what we're going to be responsible for and what the revenue stream will be. And I think all of us are pretty much in agreement that, when this decision comes before us in 2018, we will be better prepared, more informed, and able to make a sound decision. Now, between now and then, it will, it will make a difference as to who's leading the charge, and if we are doing it collectively, we'll have, in my opinion, a much better place to be when we make the decision of yes to go forward with the evaluation and the purchase, or whether to keep things status quo.
Thank you, Mrs. Agasson. This is Peoria City Council At-Large Candidate Forum, and it's brought to you by the League of Women Voters and Peoria Public Radio. I'm Tanya Kuntz. We're coming to you live from the Peoria Public Library, North Branch. The city of Peoria is facing a broad number of issues in the coming four years. It's in that vein that we ask this question. In the mayor-manager form of government, what is the role of an at-large Peoria City Council member? For this, we start with Ms. Jensen.
Well, I guess first and foremost, our role as an at-large city councilperson is to be a representative of the citizens of the entire city, not just the 5th District or the 4th District, but the entire city, including the older neighborhoods. We need to be cognizant of how we have to work together as an entire city, and bring issues forward to the city manager and to the mayor that we think is important, and that we have found is important to our citizens as they contact us and give us input. And I think that is primarily our role as the city council. I think I'm out of time.
Oh.
Oh, sorry. Anyway, that's what I think our role should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mr. Spain.
Thank you. It's great to be an at-large member, and our district members do a great job, but really, the thrill of serving in an at-large capacity is you get to be involved all throughout the community, helping to improve schools all throughout Peoria, working in older neighborhoods, advancing downtown development. Those are all things that I've been fortunate to be involved with as an at-large member. And so, I think the at-large role is an important one. But I'll also say, I think it's important that we allow our community the opportunity to make decisions about how we want our government to be structured. And I was the only at-large member, Councilmember Jensen wasn't on the council at the time, but I was the only at-large member to vote to allow our voters to look at cumulative voting, which I think is a bad system. And so, we're all going to be out here asking for your five bullet votes, but I think we ought to look at cumulative voting. There's a reason that this has been a system that has been abandoned across the country now. And again, I was the only one willing to stand up and make that vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Turner.
Thank you very much. I look at four basic things that it's our responsibility to do for the city. Number one, making the best decisions possible that we could make on your behalf. You elect us to make these decisions, and we got to make the best possible decisions after research and study in order that we can move forward. Secondly, bring forth issues regarding where we need to take the city. And where we need to take the city is going to come from you, and that's meeting with you, providing some input on what direction we need to take. And probably the most important of them is addressing citizens' concerns. When you call, we pick up the phone and address those issues that are extremely important to you. And lastly, I think our responsibility is to manage and help to grow the city budget through making decisions so we can better grow the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. Our job's fallen to two areas: what we can do in the job, and what we can do because of the job. So, in the job, really, I've got two things I want to mention. First, how hard do we study the issues? And I feel that I really dive in and look at every issue with detail. I think I've got a reputation for that. But secondly, how do we respond? And I promise, every person in here, if you've ever called me, you've gotten a call back. Thank you for shaking your head, yes. Emails, you get it back quickly, but I don't just return the call. I close the loop by putting the right person in the room with us and follow that thing until it's completed. The second thing is because of the job. I didn't know I was going to get $1,000 a month for doing this. You guys didn't either. I give that money back every month in something I call Leaders Change Peoria. We have now done 39 grants to young people, some old people, that are launching new ideas to try to build leaders, but also to try to primarily touch kids in our community. I'd like to talk more about my contact with the schools I can do because of my role, but I hope I'll get a chance on that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mrs. Agasson.
Thank you. Well, the at-large city council position is the best of all worlds. We can be partners with the district council people, and we can advocate for ideas that affect all of you. So, the conditions of our roads would be an example of where we need to be laser-focused on making the right decisions and spending your money wisely. We have safety issues that affect everyone, and the, how we deploy and how we allocate money for those services affects all of you. And planning decisions. Planning decisions that shape the way this city will look and will work and serve you over the course of generations is also a consideration. So, I can, I consider the at-large seat ideal, and I enjoy working with all the city council people. I enjoy working with the district representatives. I have partnered with them all. I think we work really well together as a team, and I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Agasson. Ms. Coyle.
Thank you. Well, many of you probably know that I taught state and local government at Bradley for eight years, and so, if you have a little extra time, I have a 90-minute presentation on how state or how local governments are formed, how they work, both in theory and in practice. So, if you're ever bored or need sleeping material, I could be happy to loan those PowerPoints to you. You know, in the council manager form of government, our council members set broad-based policy. We have one employee, and that's the manager, and the manager manages the day-to-day nuts and bolts, okay? We establish the vision and the direction the city should move, and as such, whether district or at-large, we are a conduit of information between the public and the manager. And if we're doing our job well, we are out there. We're at those neighborhood association meetings. We're out there talking to people and asking them, "What are the most important issues? How will this impact you?" And we need to balance what's best. We're going to have differing opinions of what's best in different parts of the city, and we have to use our best judgment to convey those to the management. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This is question number six, and I believe we begin with Mr. Spain. A Freedom of Information Act request reveals the city, to date, has paid $57,000 in legal fees for Mayor Artis's so-called "Twittergate." Do you think the taxpayers should continue to pay for this action? If not, please elaborate.
Sure. Thank you for the question. It's a really good one. We have incurred expenses to date related to the Twitter situation, as you mentioned, and so, what the next steps are are really two different paths. So, the city is pursuing an opportunity to dismiss this case, and we're waiting to see how that request is adjudicated. And then, there may be an opportunity, as we have with all of our pending litigation, that we can consider a settlement. And we don't have a settlement offer on the table right now for that. If we get one, it's something that we should look at. I think this is a very serious topic, but right now, we have those two different paths, and we need to continue forward on this topic, and, but do so in a way that's very mindful of dollars, because I don't think these are many dollars that we want to incur going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Spain. Mr. Turner.
Thank you very much. It would be great if this would be dismissed, or if we could find a way to settle it. But I can sit here very honestly, and over the time that I've tried to serve this community, it's so easy to get crosswise or get in a situation, and it can happen to any of us, on a decision we make or something that we do, that I could be in the same situation in a very short amount of time. So, I have to be realistic. I wouldn't want the, the city to support me if I do something that I made a bad decision on. So, I, I think hopefully it'll get dismissed or settled, but that's my take on the situation. I don't want any of us hanging out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Weaver.
Yes, thank you. Very sensitive matter, obviously, when you're involved in the middle of a lawsuit. And because of that, when this was first brought to us in closed session about how we're going to handle it, I requested we have a three-person committee of council members that represented the citizens' interest as taxpayers. I couldn't get that to happen. I couldn't get that to happen. Since then, we have never had a discussion in closed session about this matter. None of us are up to speed sufficiently on how it's being handled from a legal perspective. Folks inside the administration are managing it. Some of the folks inside the administration are involved in the lawsuit. That's why I think it was very important we try to find someone or some group of people that could represent your interests. Totally inappropriate the way this is being handled. I recommend a committee of three. I wish we could go back to that idea so that you know your interests are represented properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Now we go to Mrs. Aikerson.
Thank you, Tanya. I agree that this is a very serious issue, and it is my opinion that we needed to settle this as soon as it came forward. This is going to be something that we most likely will lose ultimately. I think that this decision will be drawn out and brought up through the chain of the system, the appeals process. I do not believe that the ACLU will let this go without having their day in court. We are entitled to free speech. We are protected from unreasonable search and seizure. And I do believe that while these comments that were made were offensive, and I wouldn't want anyone saying those things about me or my family, I do believe that this is going to have the unintended consequences similar to the Streisand effect.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Coyle.
Thank you so much. Well, being the one individual not currently seated on the council, I probably don't have all the same information that my peers do up here. However, I can say this entire situation, I think, is going to have the unintended effect of having some people discouraged from serving in public service. You know, when you feel like you can't exercise your right to free speech without suddenly being jumped on, I think that is a discouraging factor. We can see it. We don't have a lot of people who step up and run for office, and let's face it, there are a lot of great people in Peoria who could be serving our community in office, but they don't. And it's not just the money factor, which is a huge, huge problem in running for office, but also this criticism of what you can and can't not say and not being yourself. You know, I think that we need to weigh the information of the case and what the costs are associated with that and keep the taxpayers in mind. I'm not an attorney, nor do I play one on TV, so I probably don't have quite the same perspective as some of my colleagues who are attorneys here. But I think we do need to weigh the cost and the impact that it's going to have moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coyle. Ms. Jensen.
Thank you. I guess first, I just want to clear up, some of the cost of the defense of this litigation is paid for by the city's insurance, so it's not all a cost to the city taxpayers. But I have been disappointed about how this has been handled. And, you know, I joined Chuck Weaver in pushing the city manager and the mayor to form a committee for us to be more involved in the decisions related to this litigation. And I have consistently been requesting the council to get updates on pending litigation, including this Twittergate lawsuit that we have not been getting. As an attorney that represents municipalities and school districts, I regularly provide legal reports and updates to my clients of pending litigation, and we need to get that as a city council, and we have not been getting that since I joined the council. And that will help us have more informed decisions and be able to give input on cases like this Twittergate case. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mr. Turner, we start now with you for question number seven. We're essentially going to ask you for the big fix to the city in 60 seconds. The question goes like this: What plans, if any, does the city have to eliminate crime, poverty, and poor education in areas of the city that are south of McClure? Big question, 60 seconds.
Can you repeat it one more time?
Oh, I'd be happy to do that. It's intense.
Thank you.
Other than solving the world's problems, too.
You just take the whole globe. That's right. What plans, if, do you want me to repeat that again for you, or no?
I grew up in a crime-infested neighborhood. My son's a police officer, and I've got some ideas on some things that we need to do, and we could, I think, really enhance our police department in terms of more zero tolerance. You know, we've got issues now that are being, it's more of the issue of murder than it is anything else. But I'd like to see a two-stops-a-night program, two stops a night. While you're out cutting your grass in the summer, that district officer should stop by, get to know you, talk to you, just two stops a night out of their eight-hour shift. And then they will know people that can talk to them about crime issues going on in those particular neighborhoods. In addition to that, one of the things I would like to see on weekends in high-crime areas is the county and the city of Peoria police officers working together on patrols just on the weekends in high-crime areas. I've got a whole bunch more of those things, but I think those things will help to deter crime a little bit more than we're trying to get to now.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Weaver.
If anybody wants me to repeat the question, I am happy to do that.
We kind of make up our answers, whatever question you choose.
You just answer whatever question you like, sir.
No. I tell you, poverty is the one that really hits us, and that's why it's so important we work on jobs, because that's one of our solutions. There are four devastating root causes that always go together with regard to poverty: teen pregnancy, absent fathers, high unemployment, poor education, and crime. You've got to tackle all of them. This Leaders Change Peoria idea, that's a whole bunch of people, 39 now, working out with groups of people to try to address all those. A number of these, though, are things that are directly city responsibility. Obviously, our Crime Patrol, and what we're doing with ShotSpotter is a good project right now. Don't Shoot has been a good project. But probably the one we talk about the most is what's going on with our schools. I think it's very important, we have a couple of school board members in the front, that's probably the most critical election we're dealing with right now, that how can we continue to improve District 150? I take great pride in the time I spend at Central High School, and especially, I'd like to talk about some time of program I'm doing there with testing kids and helping them understand that all they've got to do is find their skill sets and work hard, and they can get out of poverty. Thank you.
Mrs. Aikerson.
Thank you, Tanya. Well, the most important thing that we can do as a city, because we really cannot control what happens in people's private homes, we can control blight. We can do more to enforce the codes that we have on the books today that would reduce the blight that we see through environmental code violations. Poverty comes when people don't have enough money to make the choices that we would all expect to be making. We're creating a city where we're obligating people to own cars. And for everyone in this room that drove here in a car, life is pretty good for you. But when we create a city when you can't be independent without car ownership, you are forced to make decisions that sometimes have a spillover effect with your children in the schools. They come to school without adequate food, without adequate clothing, perhaps not the kind of shelter that they need. So as policymakers, we can change the way a city works.
Thank you, Mrs. Aikerson. Ms. Coyle.
Thank you. You know, I think this is a big question and one that is not solved with one program or even 10 or 12 programs. For those of you who don't know me, I grew up in a single-parent household. My mother was a telephone operator with a high school education, and she worked double shifts, and I was a latchkey kid on the public lunch program at school. And so good things can happen to kids who grow up in poverty. I'm an example. Councilman Turner grew up in PHA housing. You can break out of that, but it really does take a village, a whole community, to help support a child. And I think early intervention efforts are the most important. I'm a big fan of the Resident Police Officer Program, ShotSpotter, all of these things. These tackle the problem once these people are teens and adults. We have to start at a much earlier age. I spent several years tutoring down at Garfield School and Treeland School with the most beautiful, amazing children who had the most horrific home circumstances. But knowing that one person came in that school every week and spent time with them and loved them and wanted them to be a success and talked about college to them can make a huge difference, and I would encourage everyone in this community to find a few hours a week to do something like that.
Thank you. Ms. Jensen.
Big question to answer in a minute. I guess first, with regards to crime, I think the city right now is on the right track with ShotSpotter and the Don't Shoot program. They both, over the last year and a half, have proved successful. They've reduced the shootings and the murders in the city and the crime, and I think we need to continue to support that. That's why I voted in favor of expanding that program, the ShotSpotter program. With regards to poverty, I think that one of the things I have advocated for along the lines of Councilwoman Aikerson is we need to target and focus on our older neighborhoods and strengthen them. That will help improve opportunities and the poverty that's in some of our older neighborhoods. We need to target inspections and grants and programs for people in those neighborhoods. With regards to educational opportunity, we need to work with District 150 and Dunlap like we have, but we also need to support Quest, Charter School, Peoria Academy, and the other private schools, and get them in the older, poorer neighborhoods and provide scholarships to those who need them.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mr. Spain.
Thank you. Again, a lot to talk about in one minute. I want to focus on crime, and a number of programs have been mentioned already. I think they're good programs developed by the administration. But four years ago, when I was running for reelection, I promised to develop a residential police officer program if I was fortunate enough to return to the council. I did so. So now we have three resident officers. All are located south of McClure, as the tail end of the question indicated. And I think it's a critical program that really is changing the way that we improve public safety in our community. And I don't think there's ever been a more important time in our country that we would be working to strengthen the relationships between police officers and the neighborhoods in which they serve. So we have three great officers. They're working at a grassroots level. They step out of their front door, and they're on duty. And it really hearkens back to a different type of police strategy that is about building relationships and changing the characteristics of our neighborhood one person at a time. If I'm reelected, I want to expand the program.
Thank you, Mr. Spain. Live from the North Branch Peoria Public Library, this is the Peoria City Council At-Large Candidate Forum on 89.9 FM WCBU Peoria Public Radio. The time is 11:02. "Since Peoria Housing Authority has so far been unsuccessful in their plan to relocate Taft, can the city limit the number of Section 8 rentals by area to avoid the concentration of Section 8 rentals that happened in the East Bluff?" I will repeat that question for anybody who needs it, and Mr. Weaver, you start.
Yes. Typically, Section 8 is difficult to control from our perspective because it's a voucher that goes to someone that can then go into a rental home. So our ability to control that is slim. But I want to go ahead and address the PHA issue, and sometimes the worst thing that happened to you is the best thing that happened to you. This has been a disaster for some families. I see a young lady in the back who's been leading to try to make sure that she is not impacted negatively by a project coming into her neighborhood. I challenged PHA when we were in a joint session with this statement: "I will be ready to say yes to neighbors when you can prove to us you will be a great neighbor and will not impact property values." I was afraid to say that. I was putting them on the spot. Since then, that's registering. I talked to the head of the Housing Authority, Mr. Zika, and I know that he understands now that that is his task and that they must be a better operator than they've been in the past. That's the best thing that can happen. PHA has to step up its game. I believe the eyes that we're putting on is going to cause that, and I believe in the end we'll have a better city because of that.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mrs. Aikerson.
Tanya, would you repeat the question? Because I think it was, can we control the number of vouchers in the neighborhoods? Is that?
"Can the city limit the number of Section 8 rentals by area to avoid the concentration of the Section 8 rentals that happened in the East Bluff?"
Okay. Well, the Section 8 vouchers that are independent, that are called portable vouchers, those are handed to people that they can use anywhere, and we will never know where they go. The project-based vouchers are projects that have the voucher as the revenue stream to pay for the project long-term. Those projects, we do have some control over. There's zoning that would have to be met, and according to HUD, projects are not to be put in areas where there's not opportunity. According to HUD, projects cannot be put where there are not high-performing schools. I think we have a major opportunity to engage the public, and I think we have to demand that the Housing Authority operates with more accountability, maintains their buildings so that we can all be proud of them, and has high expectations, and moves people into upward mobility positions.
Thank you, Mrs. Aikerson. Ms. Coyle.
You know, Section 8 vouchers are very hard to control where those are utilized, and it's not just the issue of Section 8 vouchers. Not every tenant in a Section 8 apartment or house is a bad tenant, and I think that's something people need to understand. Again, I grew up in a single-parent household, and we had a Section 8 duplex across the street from us throughout my high school years. Sometimes the tenants were great. Sometimes their yards looked immaculate, better than anyone in the neighborhood. Other times, not so much so, and my mother would get off of her second shift as a telephone operator and go clean up the garbage on the lot. So I think you need to look at, how do we make these property managers, the landlords who use, who take the vouchers to have people living there, how do we get them to submit to inspections and to hold the people who live there accountable for maintaining their properties, which if they don't, end up being a blight in a neighborhood and an eyesore? And I think so we need to look at those properties being properly inspected and maintained.
Thank you, Ms. Coyle. Ms. Jensen.
Let's see if I can get this in a minute, too. Well, first, as Councilwoman Aikerson indicated, we do not have complete control over where any vouchers or Section 8 will go. The city only has control if they have to get a zoning change, and I would support some limits. But, you know, I've been vocal from the very beginning about my dissatisfaction about the process and how PHA handled this. Not only was I pushing for more public input, but I would not support any of the proposed locations without knowing what the entire plan is. I think a good solution to the problem, which I mentioned at the last candidate's forum, being I was an attorney in Cabrini-Green, at Cabrini-Green Legal A Clinic in the early '90s. And at that time, they solved that problem by tearing down the public housing and creating a mixed income, mixed residential and commercial area at Clyborne and North with single-family, multifamily dwellings, and middle, high-income, and poor people, as well as commercial. And I think that should be at the riverfront where the Taft is currently located.
Ms. Jensen. Thank you. Mr. Spain.
Thank you. I think before we can begin to really answer the question on how you relocate housing, whether that's through some use of Section 8 or through other developments, we have to improve the management characteristics of the Housing Authority. And so right now, if you think about the Peoria Housing Authority, they would have all the assets to make a great organization and a great neighbor. They have a board of directors. They have a professional staff. They have resources available that the typical neighbor would not, or a typical landlord would not, dollars from the federal government and other sources. And yet, I would expect that in any case, if you were to choose your neighbor and you had the choice of any mystery landlord or the Peoria Housing Authority, you would choose the former over the latter every time. And so that's really the first thing that needs to change. We have to improve the current management characteristics of the Peoria Housing Authority before we can take this conversation any further into specific solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Spain. Mr. Turner.
Now I will tell you the whole truth about the Peoria Housing Authority, because I lived there from age 11 to age 19, and I went in the military. Great place to live. You didn't do right, you were thrown out on your ear. You come home, your furniture would be sitting outside. Today, the Peoria Housing Authority doesn't have the wherewithal to do what's necessary. So am I going to take this and put it in our neighborhoods? No, I'm not going to do it. So they need to teach a lot of the people there, and I'm saying this because I truly believe it, life skills. They need to do a lot of other things to come a long way before they can put the PHA in various neighborhoods around this community. And I will not support it, and I think we're a long way from anybody on the council supporting it for the most part. You know, I've had relatives that's lived there, and I knew that they didn't have the capability to go into a neighborhood and disrupt the neighborhood. You know, I'm telling you what I know and what I've had to live with. We've got a long way to go with the PHA before we can do that to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. This is our final question. We'll all be getting in our cars soon to head home, more than likely. And so it is with that in mind that we ask this question: What solutions are being discussed to pay for the city's infrastructure? What solutions are being discussed to pay for the city's infrastructure needs? All of my journalism professors are cringing. You follow the meaning. Do you support or reject any of these ideas? Think roads.
Oh, yes.
Oh, I'm falling down on my job. Mrs. Aikerson.
Do I support any, what ideas? What was...
Can you repeat the question? I'm not clear. What solutions are being discussed to pay for the city's infrastructure needs? Do you support or reject any of these ideas?
Well, I can tell you what's being done. I think that we'll start there, and this is, I'm very proud of this. It's a collaboration between citizens and developers and engineers, and Councilwoman Weaver and I sit on this, and this particular committee, and we are redoing the nineteen seventy-two Infrastructure Design Guidelines, which will ensure that roads will last longer than you currently see them lasting. We will give developers and people who build our roads more choices so that the roads don't necessarily have to be as wide as they are. When they're not so wide, they're not as costly to install, they're not as costly to maintain. And going forward for how we are going to fill the gap of the money that we need to pay for these road improvements, we are facing forty million dollars in the next four years just to keep the roads in the current shape. That's not improving the roads, and that doesn't include sidewalks, curbs, or gutters. We are going to have to come up with...
Thank you.
Catherine's got the answer.
So hard to do. So hard to do. Ms. Coyle.
Okay. Thank you so much. You know, one of my three priorities is infrastructure. You need to drive around Peoria driving here. How many of you guys hit a pothole? Okay? And I only had to drive about two miles, and I hit a couple. So roads are a big priority for the city, and according to a recent report, it could take as much as fourteen million just to bring the roads to a PCI rating of green. Many of our roads are red and yellow, and I use the analogy that if our roads were like a house with minimal termite damage, if we ignore them year after year after year, eventually the house is a tear-down, as opposed to addressing maintenance at a very early stage, you could prolong the life of that product. Several years ago, the city, during a time of budget cuts, took shortcuts to stop sealing a lot of our roads, which is what has eroded. This was five or six years ago. Check your budget. To stop seal coating the roads. What does it do if you don't seal coat something? I know what happens if I don't seal coat my driveway every couple of years. What happens? It cracks. Our roads are in a horrible... Thank you. My time's up.
You guys are doing so well conforming to the sixty seconds, though. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Coyle. Ms. Jensen.
Well, thank you for the question. You know, I agree that, I think one of the city's biggest failures has been its failure to pay for the infrastructure and keep our roads up. You know, they've continued to kick the can throughout the years, and that's why our roads are in the state that they're in. That's why I support the current programs of our director, Mike Rogers. I think he's on the right track and has really put us in a new direction by being proactive and coming up with preventive strategies and a proactive approach to solving these problems. We haven't been working that way. We've just kind of been doing it on a complaint-driven basis or, you know, as the need comes up. The question, though, and I think the other important thing is to have public input, like we've done with the Main and University intersection, the improvements at Forest Hill, as well as Pioneer Parkway. But how to pay for it? The only solution that I've heard for pay is the motor vehicle tax, and I don't know if I support that. I don't think that's the way to do it, but we need to come up with other solutions. Thank you.
Mr. Spain.
Thank you. The city manager has put forward at least a conversation about motor fuel tax. Our motor fuel tax is two cents per gallon in the city of Peoria. There are surrounding communities that have no motor fuel tax. There are surrounding communities that have a four cent motor fuel tax. I think it's a conversation that we need to have going forward, and I think we can have that with some open minds among the council. That's the first thing. Second is, I agree, we need to improve our infrastructure design standards. We have developers of residential subdivisions that are able to put in brand-new roads that last ten years instead of thirty years, and we have to change that because we take jurisdiction of those roads and taxpayers are then on the hook. The third thing is work that we can do with other units of government. So currently, I'm the vice chair of the City and County Shared Services Committee, and this morning I drove to the North Branch Library on Willan Oles Road, a county road, one of the worst roads in the city of Peoria, if you ask me. But we're working with the county to revise our agreements so that they have an opportunity to make easier improvements to these roadways.
Thank you. Mr. Spain. Mr. Turner.
Thank you very much. Well, I want to make it quite clear that we didn't kick the can down the road. We had nine eleven. We've had, in two thousand and eight, we had the worst economic downturn since the Great Depression. It's called a thing, you don't have any money, and I'm not one that's going to increase your taxes. We cut fifty million dollars out of our cost structure without increasing taxes and balanced the budget. There are such a thing as design standards, as Councilman Spain said. There's things that other communities, states, and counties are doing that are state-of-the-art, and we just need to communicate a little bit more to see what's one, two, and three, and what we need to do in our community. We aren't going to get any money from the state government or the federal government unless there's some type of capital program, and we'll only get a small amount there. So we've got a long way to go, but I want you to know that we did not kick the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Weaver.
Yes. It has been good to work with Councilwoman Aikerson. We've increased depths of asphalt. This is the plan that we have right now that we'll bring to council. Depths of base, the inspection process, and the compaction requirements. So that's what can happen going forward. The problem is, I don't know if anyone's heard me say this, safety and streets. I vote no on things that aren't safety and streets, and while it has been difficult for a period of time, there has been a lot of things that have been passed that haven't been safety and streets, and we're paying for that right now. There was a comment earlier today that we have a budget projection that I asked for that came back at five million, five million, three million, three million deficits over the next four years. Get this. It didn't have our street maintenance in it that we've been talking about. If you want to come up here when you're done, we've got four documents here that an expert gave us that we should be spending seven to ten million dollars each year for street improvements. It wasn't included in the budget projection I asked for. That five, five, three, and three is really more like twelve, twelve, ten, and ten. We've got to get on top and have budget integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. You're listening to eighty-nine point nine FM WCBU HD1 Peoria Public Radio. I'm Tanya Kuntz. We're ready to begin closing statements. For that, we've drawn in advance, and we start with Ms. Aikerson.
Hold on. Are they...
Two minutes, please, ma'am.
Well, it's been so nice to be here, and what a great opportunity, and I think all of you should give WCBU a silent applause since we are not applauding. So this morning, you've heard how we have voted and made decisions and what we imagine for the future and how we plan to get there. Citizens, business, city staff, and council members will collectively make great things happen in Peoria. As at-large council members, we work well together. We each bring strengths to the city council floor. We collaborate with one another and have meaningful dialogue. We have made some tough decisions, and we are poised to be asked to make more that will set the stage for generations to come. I would like us to stay laser-focused. We are a team.
Thank you, Ms. Aikerson. Ms. Coyle.
Thank you so much. In nineteen ninety-three, I made the best decision of my life when I moved to Peoria, like many people who didn't grow up here, and I chose to stay. I love this community. Best thing that ever happened to me, and I want my children to come back here and settle and raise families and have no problem finding a job, and that's why I'm running. And that's all about strong, safe, vibrant neighborhoods which retain their values. It's about addressing our crumbling infrastructure. So we have roads that we don't have to worry about our first responders, you know, impeding their progress trying to get to an accident scene, or worrying about our businesses having trouble to get their goods to market because our roads are in such disrepair. So we need to think about infrastructure, and we need a growing economy. We have to attract and retain businesses here in Peoria. And why I'm a good candidate, you know, I wish that we had more candidates. I really do. I think democracy is all about having choices, and I wish that there were, I wish that there were ten of us up here, but they're not. There's six of us, and all are good candidates. But I would tell you today that I think I have the experience. I have the drive, the love of the city of Peoria. I'm a great listener. I have the background in city management. I have six years of public experience serving on ICC's board, and I would like to earn your vote on April seventh, or if you choose to early vote, which is a great option, at ICC North. You can start doing that on March twenty-third. Little plug for ICC.
Thank you, Ms. Coyle. Ms. Jensen.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here today. I hope you will vote for me because I will continue to work hard to make city government run better. I will continue to work hard to be an independent voice for all. I will listen to residents, business owners, young entrepreneurs, and all stakeholders demanding and ensuring that their voices be heard and they have a seat at the table before decisions are made. I've done that before projects were approved, including Route ninety-one, the sports complex, and Landen's Way. I also advocated for meaningful public input early in the budget process, and I insisted that there be notice provided to all surrounding neighbors, whether businesses and residents, and an opportunity for them to comment and object before any medical marijuana dispensary could be located in their neighborhoods. I will continue to work with other council members, staff, and developers to make sure the concerns of citizens, business, and business owners are addressed and compromises made before projects are approved. I am an honest, straight shooter and will continue to be so. I will use my skills as an experienced municipal attorney to make a difference and to help Peoria grow and move forward so it is a city that my boys and others choose to live in just the way my husband and I did twenty years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mr. Spain.
Thank you. And before I make a few closing comments, there's an issue that we really didn't get to spend much time on today, and again, I've said that it's critical, and that's how do we improve our schools? And so again, the most important issue facing our community right now is what can we do collectively to improve our schools? And I think it is the role of council members. While we're not school board members, we have opportunities to influence the strategic priorities of our school districts. There are major community challenges facing our schools that require an all-hands-on-deck mentality to fix. Within District one fifty, student mobility is a huge issue with students that start in one school and then are transferred to others throughout the year through family situations, school situations, otherwise. That type of disruption is a community challenge we need to overcome. And then I'm also a voice, and I think many are, for school choice. Opportunities not just for charter schools but magnet schools, ways that we can have innovative ideas to retain strong families in the city of Peoria. So I just wanted to touch on that because, again, I think it's so critical. Thank you to the League for hosting this forum today, to the library for having us as your guests, and to WCBU for broadcasting this session. This is an important election, and while there are not a lot of candidates running, I don't think that that changes the fact that a lot is riding on this race. I've been proud to serve you over the last eight years on the city council. I'm proud of balancing the budget through the most difficult of economic times of our lifetime, cutting fifty million dollars out of operations, which is much more difficult to do than opposing a project, and those have been important decisions that have positioned Peoria for a great future. I think the future looks bright for Peoria. That's why I'm excited to run again for another term. I need your support. I'm honored to have served you for the last eight years, and with your help and support and your vote on April seventh, I hope to continue doing so for another term on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spain. Mr. Turner.
Thank you very much. Well, I wanted to thank each and every one of you for giving us the opportunity for you to get to know us a little bit better and where we would like to see the city of Peoria go over the long term. Over the past four years, I think one of the things that this council has done is we've restored the public trust. You know, there was a time where people would watch the city council meetings for comedy, and we've changed that. We're very serious about the issues. All the negative attitudes and joking and all that is gone. We've got serious issues in front of us that we want to deal with. We've tried to balance the pressure of keeping property taxes down against all the things that we're going to have to deal with in the future. We want to stay out of your pocket. We got issues to deal with, such as crime and neighborhoods. I look at myself as a neighborhood councilperson. I have the opportunity to work with Councilman Spain to bring the RNNC to our community, which is the Regional Neighborhood Network Conference, so we can gain insight and ideas as to how to better do things and handle things in our community. But I guess what I want to tell you is the bottom line. We can sit up here and tell you everything. You have to make sure what stuff is right and what stuff is wrong. The bottom line to all the things that we're faced with is that there are no simple solutions, but there are intelligent choices that we have to make that's going to make a difference in each and every one of your lives. I truly care, and I want to continue to make a difference. For nineteen out of nineteen budgets that we've done, I've never voted for a property tax increase because then you would vote with your feet, and I want to keep you in our community, and I want to keep doing good things that make a difference and grow this community. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Councilman. This will be a low voter turnout, and I want to, on top of thanking the League and the library, also WCBU and radio station, thank all you voters for being here today because we'll only see about fifteen percent turnout, but the beauty of that is it's intelligent people that care and are going to make a great decision. I started this by saying you have six good candidates. I also said, throw your votes to the one or two that are going to take this city the direction you want because we watch each other, and when someone makes sense or the public says, yeah, that's what we want, people adjust. I'm asking you to adjust to some of the directions I've been trying to take our city. I mentioned at the beginning, I talked about an egg in a boulder, and the four boulders we have to deal with are streets and safety. That's our job. To do that, we have to have budget integrity. We've been weak on that. I think I brought some of that to the council to make us stronger on budget integrity. But the other two areas, Councilman Spain brought up a great point, schools and jobs are the two areas that we also have to focus on. With regard to schools, Councilman Spain and I meet monthly with District one fifty. Also, they just had a strategic plan. I was honored to attend those strategic plans. Only city councilmen there. That's where we can give our input, and we should have all been there. With regard to jobs, I have a real simple saying. Don't lead with regulation. We compete with other states and other surrounding communities. We should not be the leaders on regulation. We're about into a process right now to do that again. I'm trying to put the brakes on it. We have to let these Peoria, Washington, and Morton outregulate us so that we can increase jobs. Also, five years ago, I was the founding president of Central Illinois Angels. That group has now invested eight million dollars of private money twenty-six times into eighteen startup companies. That's how we're going to change our community with the private sector working like that. I'd just like to close by saying it's been an honor working with you, honor working for you. I'm going to be shameless. I'm going to ask to be one of those one or two people that you throw your bullet votes to, and I promise you I'll work hard for you. Thank you.
Our thanks to the at-large Peoria City Council candidates for participating in today's forum. The League of Women Voters of the Greater Peoria Area hosts a Peoria District one fifty Candidates Forum tomorrow at two o'clock in this room. That will not be broadcast on Peoria Public Radio. The broadcast of this forum on eighty-nine point nine FM Peoria Public Radio was made possible by Daryl Scott, Brett Ring, and Tom Hunt. Video production of this event was the work of George Bean and Focal Point Video. This rebroadcasts again Friday on Channel twenty-two. That's Friday, the thirteenth, at six P.M. Production of this program was made possible by Cheryl Budzinski and the League of Women Voters of the Greater Peoria Area, the Peoria Public Library, as well as Peoria Publics Radio's Daryl Scott, Tom Hunt, Nathan Irwin, Alex Rochiano, Cindy Dermody, and Stephanie Sobey. Thank you for being with us for this at-large Peoria City Council Candidate Forum. Please remember to vote on April seventh. Early voting begins March twenty-third. I'm Tanya Kuntz. This is Peoria Public Radio.